Okay, so Tina's not gonna be here tonight. She's on sick leave, is that what we call it?
We're coming from surgical procedure today.
Okay. And do we have any public participation this evening?
Does that mean?
No.
Oh, okay.
Unless you've got something you wanna address other than the gym equipment.
No. Well, I have something on basketball.
Go right ahead.
So, Principal Wong asked me to stop by and inform the plans that we're gonna do for our next basketball season. We have a basketball season going on right now for boys and girls grade six through eight, and then we move into a second season at grades five through eight. We're short on the boys' side. We're in two different leagues, the league we're in right now, we can have guest players from other towns play for our team to give us enough to play. The second league we're going, we can only have players from our town. So, we're short on the boys' side. My suggestion is that we continue the model we have right now, invite a few guest players onto our boys' team for the second season, so we can provide the sport and educational opportunities for that second group of players that are coming in. So, it'd be a team that would play ten to twelve exhibition matches, no playoffs, but it'd give them opportunity to be trained and have an opportunity for competition against other schools.
If we do that, won't we lose like we did with the soccer? We'll have that same issue, we will lose the chance. Our girls won't be able to play in the playoffs.
It has nothing to do with girls, it's the boys' team. Now, the girls, the girls will go in the same fashion they're going now. They have enough to compete in the other league with only Lubeck players. On the boys' side, we can't build enough.
Well, you pull from the girls, have the girls play on the boys' team.
We can do that, but I feel that the girls have enough games to be played right now. You know, athletes can play certain many games in the season that's, that puts them in a good spot to develop. Too many games, you start to go in the direction. So, I think the girls, I know the girls have enough games to play.
Thank you. You? Okay, consider the, um... Where am I at here? Minutes?
Yeah.
Reading out the wrong report here. To consider approval of the November nineteenth, November twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen School Committee Minutes as written, with corrections as recommendation, as recommended by the student administration schools. Can't read that. So, everyone have a copy of that in front of them there? Have a motion on this to accept these minutes. Second on that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Three? All opposed?
That's Tina.
Okay. There you go, so, three, two. Principal's report. Do we have one? Did you send one along?
I have an additional item. The team has intended that Mr. Ashby brief the board on the status of winter basketball. He's done that. Additionally, Tina has forwarded to me a quote from CECO Security on the security system. Also of note, Black Bear Security was also contacted for an estimate, but they did not provide one. So, this is what we have at the moment. I'd like to take a minute to take a look at that. Total amount with these specs, twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty cents. A little deeper into the document, CECO Security would expect half at signing and half upon the completion of installation.
Where are these cameras gonna be?
We certainly have one over the parking lot, one outside the office in the general central lobby area. Usually good practice to have one at the entrances and exits after that. I do not know the other locations off the top of my head. Certainly the exterior parking lot, the main office, central lobby area, and the entrance and exit.
They are listed here.
Yeah, they're listed, exterior door.
Are these the same people that monitor our systems now?
Yes.
Okay. And Black Bear or any other company give a reason why they didn't respond?
Not that I'm aware of, but I verified with Tina the day before yesterday.
Yeah, I'd like to get at least one more quote on something like this here. Twelve thousand dollars is a lot of money, though. Looking, is there something else?
What does the, what does it cost us now?
That I don't know, because the camera system, we do have a security monitoring system. I'd have to pull that actual fee that we pay to monitor, but the camera system we have right now, I don't believe we're making a payment on it since it's a limited use.
That's quite over too. VCI technology, so. Now, this would not include monitoring, correct? This would be... I think that we would have control of the building as far as getting information off of its own like that?
Yeah, it would include, the digital video recorder here would also have a hard drive, and I believe, as it was described to me, it had like a little chip called SD card attached, so data can be removed, and it can be reviewed, it can be recorded. It might, there could be a good reason for us to record information. The quote, as you can see on page one, also includes a flat screen monitor, so the cameras can be monitored in real time. So, conceivably, if we choose to adopt this particular system, there'd be a flat screen monitor with camera views right on there, so they can be monitored in real time.
Yeah, if you wanna see one, we have it back on the ambulance. Roam down there. I think it has eight cameras on it, so you see eight cameras on it all at once.
Is it required to have a professional security company do this? Because I know there's a lot of different security systems that can be installed by computer technicians.
I, it, I...
Or do we have to use a high-priced security people? Because, I mean, there, I didn't know if there was regulation from schools that we have to use a security company.
You do not. There's, there's another, there's another private company that's operated by just one person, that some of the other schools use, both Perry and Esport and Alexander, this gentleman, this gentleman's helped me extensively.
One right here in town that I know that can actually install this stuff.
Could we count that down?
Yeah.
If other towns are using them? Do we have an idea of how much other towns are paying, or how much their other towns paid in the past? Has anybody installed anything in the AOS recently?
Nothing recent. Some of the work that you see here where it says upgrade existing wiring?
Mm-hmm.
We have had wiring work done around the district. Esports had wiring work done along with Alexander. They had the wires upgraded. The wiring upgraded when their phone system was revisited. But as far as an actual security system, I have not had to replace a security system or install an entirely new system at any of the locations in the district.
Are they local that we could get a bid from them? The people that the other AOS towns use?
I see, I see no reason why not.
Just to get comparative?
Give those people a call and see if we can get them to look at the system. Not show them this, but show them what we want, have done.
Okay. Like, and we can follow up with, with the other systems. Black Bear did not submit a quote, but there's a third person in town, and I know of one, this other person that I'm referring to actually lives in Kansas. But there's somebody on the other side of the county. We can, we can request a quote from them as well. So, I would encourage the board to keep this, and this will give you some idea as well as the scope of the work. So, keep this quote. We don't necessarily need to act on it tonight, but we can certainly follow up and attempt to get more than one.
If we get copies of the contracts, the other providers would propose a dispute card.
Sample contract.
Thank you.
Tina leave anything else with you, Bill?
I, right on the table, we're down for it.
Is it in this one? Just basketball on that one. And she does have a list of dates, mark your calendars for school events.
If you know enough on this Fred Jones thing, could you comment on that? I'm seeing it all over the report here. Fred Jones, positive classroom discipline.
It's part of an ongoing professional development series that we've had in place here with, with Mr. Jones. Do you wanna comment on that, Anna?
Classroom discipline, classroom management program is fit. You can sustain on all teachers to be trained in it. We've had old staff, that doesn't sound, you know, after a while, yet new staff have not been familiar with it, so it's a retraining of Fred Jones, we read some chapters, we watch videos, we practice in small groups techniques that will help us with our classroom management and classroom management, reduce managing, reduce waste of learning time. So, it's held in house and, um...
So, looking at the rest of these dates where it says PEPG work session on January ninth, that is a work session Kurt Jack and the other members of the steering committee for the district, and that refers to the teacher and administrator evaluation system. We all gather at Pembroke Elementary, which is a central site. Facilitator Kurt Jack, as you listed here, on January sixteenth. Tina's arranged for him to independently come to Lubeck School. Kurt's been here on several occasions, and he's doing great work for us around the district. But he does meet with the, with the steering committee on the ninth, and does indeed schedule independently his visitations to the other schools. Growth mindset, train the trainer, third session. Again, this is part of the continuing professional development. You can see some other work sessions here on the evaluation system. No school on Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day on the twenty-first, early release on the twenty-fifth. Progress reports going home also on January twenty-fifth, and star testing is scheduled on January twenty-eighth. One other item, since I have the listed dates here in front of me that I will add, that Tina may not be aware of yet, look for state-issued school report cards in the middle of them. The testing data has been released, obviously. Parents should have their student reports by now.
Testing based on when?
Well, that's last spring, we're just now releasing those. So, that, that testing data is out there. And this year, since we've used the same instrument for several years in a row now, the state will be issuing a state report card. So, look for that, look for that toward the middle of the month. I don't have the definitive date, but I have marked my calendar. I have to be at UMM on the twenty-fourth for specific training as it relates to another school, not Lubeck, but I am required to be at UMM on the twenty-fourth. So, obviously, the state report cards will be out before that. So, toward the middle of the month.
And then this basketball, this is what you were talking about? Okay. School committee, anyone on the school committee have something?
Oh, this isn't on the agenda, so, but it was asked of me a couple of weeks ago. And it was on the agenda last time, and I said I was gonna follow up because everybody was gone for Christmas break. It is, we were talking about professional development of the school. It's human resource development, and it's very common with schools. We'd already voted last year unanimously to have some of this stuff. It's, it's done the schools that are doing wonderful, and it's done schools that are just doing okay, and it's done schools that are not doing okay. It's, it's a, it's a good way of keeping your school fresh, of, um, keeping abreast of new developments that come through, things like robotics club, how to leverage it to be even better. And, and there's a whole discipline on it. And this person at the University of Maine, I know we had, Mr. Johnson had given a couple of people resumes of a couple of people, but nothing ever materialized to that. But the University of Maine provides this outreach service to schools, and they do utilize it a lot. This is the professor, and I don't know her, I haven't met her. She specializes in rural schools, and she's fond of social economic change. She's, um, works with schools to effectively leverage partnerships with external organizations. Just all around, it's a, it's a positive thing. It's not come in and crack the whip. It's just a positive thing. And this is the contact information that was requested. And so, that's all this is. It explains a little bit about research and outreach that the University of Maine is dedicated to doing for rural communities. And a lot of schools take advantage of this. So, these are the contact information, anybody interested?
Okay, would you like to have someone contact this person to get more information and how we can go about this?
Oh, the university said, you know, I can get the information. It should be somebody that's employed administratively, like Mr. Johnson, normal.
I can do that.
But it shouldn't, you know, we aren't really employed at school. I can gather facts and information and pass them on to the people that will be making the decisions.
Her contact information is listed right there on, on the front page, email and phone number, I can...
Yeah, and of the whole department, College of Education, Human Development, in Orno. It's all right there. If she can come out, they do have graduate students that do this kind of things as projects. Come out. So, it's a service that's provided all over the school.
Thank you. Anyone else on school board have anything else? Superintendent's report.
I have a few quick items in my report this evening. I attended a meeting of the Small Schools Coalition on November thirtieth. If you're not familiar with that group, that was formed probably in excess of ten years ago as a way to advocate for the small schools, smaller old schools in particular around the state. Washington County, Ooster County are heavily represented on that particular group. Two members of the main state legislature were also present at the meeting, local representative Will Tool, in addition to Paul Sterns, both of whom have been in, have been in the legislature for multiple sessions. This is Representative Tool's third session. Neither of those gentlemen had their committee assignments finalized yet as of November thirtieth. Both have a strong interest in education, and they are regular participants in that particular group. It is also the opportunity to bend the ear of a state, main state board member. Retired superintendent Fern DeJardin from St. Agathe has been appointed to the main state board of education, and she, she was a member of the main small schools coalition at its origin. So, it's quite a luxury for that group to have the ear of a member of the main state board of education, and Fern was there on the third. LCOC, I have been in contact with a representative of the LCOC regarding heating, a heating contribution. When last I spoke to May Garden, she and I have gone back and forth, numerous emails, phone calls, et cetera. I finally indicated to her that it would be easiest if that group were willing to simply make a donation. The school department can in fact receive a donation. We would simply track it as extra revenue that comes to us, so it can be readily tracked, and we can in fact receive a donation. It doesn't have to be anything complicated. She indicated to me that, at the next meeting of her board, and I, she didn't give me that date, that they would be willing to take the matter up. But I am led to believe that there is somebody who would be interested in making a donation. So, a flat rate donation of some amount of money, which seemed to be the easiest thing to do. But I look forward to hearing back from the LCOC.
So, can you tell, tell us what that means? That the heating system will then go into the whole old high school room?
Well, the, the situation now, the controls are on the school's side for the heat. So, if the LCOC wants heat up there, then Sheldon goes down there and literally turns it off. The electricity has been metered already, they get a separate bill, they pay, but that's not an issue. The heating system, the way that it's constructed, and Mike can comment on it much more specifically than I can, it isn't set up so the bill can be separated. We have three or four fill tanks around the building, we get three or four drops per year. And because fuel, heating oil consumption can't be readily metered, that's why I say that the easiest solution would seem to be a flat rate donation of some amount of money. Is there something you wanna add to that later?
Well, the heat is kept on as a minimum right now.
Yes, it is.
On days when they're not there, the heat is basically down to under fifty degrees inside the building. The, uh... The only way that can be really metered, if you can do a calculation of space and to heat a space to a certain temperature and something like that, all we can actually put some kind of a meter on boilers. Since those boilers that are in there actually service the gym and the school and something like that, it's kinda difficult to do it that way there. Down the road, once we get an alternative heating system, there are no boilers, then it can be completely metered and be up to them to, you know, harness up the heat there. But as far as, you know, where it is right now, it's heated to a minimum to basically keep the building intact. If you're aware of some of the problems we had last year, when we went down to twenty-four zero, we had some serious water damage down there, so. But, you know, it's been on the table a long time to get them to contribute to what's going on, because it's actually not part of the lease agreement to heat it. They do pay metered water, they do pay metered electricity, and I believe those have been paid. I've checked on those bills, those have been paid, but there's really no way to easily harness up how much the heat is costing down there, so. So, hopefully we'll get some...
Mike, Mike mentioned the gym, and that triggered something in my mind. How's it been, Bill?
In the gym?
Yeah.
It was sure the last two days warmed up today.
In case the board is unaware, the boiler that services the gym has malfunctioned. And the remedy for that has been to increase the heat on either side of the gym and leave the doors open to get some air flowing. But this board in years past has expressed concern of the status of the heating system, and we did have a malfunction. Eastern has been here, they're doing what they can, they're ordering parts, but there was a malfunction that resulted in no heat to the gym.
So, and I'm working with another company trying to get alternative heating, whether it might be heat pump systems and something like that, or something that will go on the roof to actually probably even replace that boiler. To get us, at least for the gym and the cafeteria, off boil. So, I'm waiting to hear from this guy and find out if the roof can actually indeed support a unit on the roof like we're looking for, so. If that's, that's a ways down the road to get another winter to get through with this old boiler down there, so. At least the gym floor hasn't buckled this time, so. We had that problem last year, so.
Couple other write-ins in my report this evening. At the board's request, I contacted Gail Erdheim of the Department of Education. Gail specializes in truancy dropout, attendance, homeless liaison, that type of, of those areas. And I indicated your desire to invite her to come on down for a visit and talk about some of the rule changes around attendance, and she's offered to help us craft a local policy to that effect, which I think is a tremendous offer on her part. The date she's holding for us, I asked her to look at her calendar for January tenth. That would be the second Thursday of the month. In looking at it, the third, we're only, we're only a day back from vacation, so the tent seemed to be a better option. She's holding it for us. I indicated to her I would follow up after this meeting to say whether or not the tent is gonna be a go, if we can get a quorum, do we wanna look at another date, but she is holding the tent for us. So, what, what do we think? I have heard from Melissa, she can't...
I know, I will...
That's good for me. That's good for me.
Me too. Fine.
Okay. I will, I will confirm with her, we will have at least four board members on the tent. Okay. Last item in my report this evening where it says review of the August thirtieth minutes. There may have been a little confusion at our last meeting in November, and we met on November twenty-ninth. So, I polled minutes, and just for clarification, I'll wait till those minutes go around. This board voted to meet twice a month, and that's fine. In November, because of the way the Thursdays fell, we actually met three times. So, we met on the first, the fifteenth, and the twenty-ninth. So, when it came to be the twenty-ninth, we had, we had three folks present, which is a quorum, that's fine, we can conduct business. But in fairness to the other two members, I wanna meet. I wanted to just revisit the matter to make sure that there wasn't any confusion, because there could be a difference depending on how the days fall between twice a month and every two weeks. We went every two weeks in November, we could get three meetings in, but the, the minutes do show that the vote was twice a month. So, I don't want there to be any confusion. I'm perfectly fine to keep going with twice a month. But if there were, if there was anybody on the board that didn't block off the twenty-ninth, because we'd already met on the first and the fifteenth, that might have led to confusion, so.
It was also at the time when we weren't getting much of the communication.
Right. And, and on the hand, yes, and I, I still am, we are still picking up pieces, but we're gaining steam in my office regarding the data breach and recovering our levels of service. So, if we are gonna confirm on the tenth with Gail Erdheim, that would put your next meeting on the twenty-fourth. So, if we're marking our calendar, that's the tenth and the twenty-fourth for Lubeck, and that's what I will confirm on my calendar tomorrow. That's all I have in my report for this evening.
So, it'll go, if there's a third Thursday, we'll just have three weeks between meetings? If there's a third Thursday in a month?
I mean, to be, to be consistent with what you've already done, yeah, so.
And there's gonna be a timeframe in February and probably in April where the school's gonna be on vacation, so one of those meeting dates might fall on that particular week when the school's on break. They don't have meetings when the school is on break, so. I mean, the, the meeting behind having at least two meetings a month is to get through all the stuff and push through the stuff, so we're not here until nine o'clock at night, like we've been here some nights.
Right. So, we know that, we know when the school's gonna be out in February and in April. Can we...
And I've been asked by the town administrator to get a schedule to her, so she can post it on the calendar here for the town office. So, once I get that done, I'll actually push that out to everyone and so we know where our meetings are gonna be, so. Question, where are we with this communications and data stuff going on at the AOS office?
Yep. When I say we're picking up steam, I signed a work order to have a security analysis conducted. That is now all go. I've also signed an enhanced security package today that will be added to our security suite. My staff took training yesterday, as luck would have it. Our legal firm, the legal firm from Drummond and Woodson offered a one and a half hour webinar, so I made sure that our tech person and three members of my staff, as well as myself, all made ourselves available to take training, and I am putting... And I am pleased to say that our response, uh, has been, uh, in agreement with what we are required to observe under the law. If you're wondering what that is, we have to notify the affected domain, we have to notify law enforcement, and we have to take corrective action. Those are the minimum requirements. Uh, additionally, as I indicated, security analysis. Central office does have data insurance, and we contacted our insurance carrier. Um, I've had a few phone calls come back to me from people that we notified. They get a, they get a letter in the mail from me, and they get a scary letter from Mr. Johnson, and they have some questions. And I've spoken with five or six people. You know, all are very, very supportive of our efforts, very understanding. Yes, they're concerned, and rightly so. Uh, but generally, I think there's an understanding that we live in an age of technology, and there are people out there who are very savvy, who are willing to do bad things. Uh, but we are indeed moving forward, uh, and, uh, it is my hope that we will return to full operational capacity, hopefully by the end of January. But we need to give it time for that security analysis to be run, because it wouldn't seem prudent to go back to full operations until we are absolutely sure that our system is clean and we can move forward safely. So I'm hoping by the end of, by the end of January.
Question. Is there any indication or anybody reporting that, um, the data breach has, um, caused harm to anyone? Has anybody been personally affected?
I know, I know of three employees who were contacted by their financial institution and to say, you know, there's been something suspicious, can you confirm who you are for us? I know of three cases of that, none of which resulted in any adverse effect. And I attribute that to a couple of things. A, the financial institutions have their own security protocols. But it, but truthfully, I'll pat my staff on the back, we notified our financial institutions, uh, almost immediately in an extremely timely manner. And that is, that, that I believe has paid dividends. Uh, so we've alerted the financial institutions that we interface with. And in the letter, in the notification letter, uh, from me, I advised all employees and former employees to contact their financial institutions and take advantage of the security measures that they offer. So yes, I'm aware of three instances where something suspicious was happening. Uh, but in every one of those cases, there were no adverse effects, because it was caught in, in, in time.
But it is possible, um, because of those reports, that they are using this information.
It is possible.
Yeah. I just wondered if, I know sometimes they sit on it for six months.
Right.
And then they go after it.
Mm-hmm.
They hang onto it. But I, I was just wondering if anybody had any idea.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Old business? New business? Consider disposable of broken gym equipment. And if Mr. Ashby had to kind of like go over this and then get some pictures here, we can tap around with different things and, uh, describe what's going on.
Sure. Well, as, as you're coming to the agenda, you see all the equipment up on the stage. Uh, our risk manager profile is quite high under two reasons. One, it's largely unsecure, and a lot of it is broken. I would classify. I classify this equipment as residential, not commercial. Uh, so repairing this, uh, old equipment that's broken, I don't think it's cost effective. I'd like to reduce our risk manager profile by at least eliminating the broken equipment from the stage. Where it goes, I'm not sure. I would suggest it be disposed of. Uh, maybe somebody wants it, maybe somebody doesn't. But, uh, I'd really like to reduce that risk profile in the gym, uh, on, on, on the broken equipment.
How heavy are these pieces?
Yeah, the, you know, uh, I'd say anywhere from sixty pounds to the bicycles to maybe hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty pounds of the treadmills.
How many pieces are there altogether?
Broken equipment, I'd say there's probably six or seven total parts of equipment. Weight equipment and exercise equipment, probably around twenty pieces.
Okay, so the, the ones you want to see gone are the ones that are broken?
At least, I would have, yes.
Okay. I think my idea about this is you'd probably put out there just like the equipment or the desk equipment in the LCOC is put out to public. They want to come and get it, and they have use for it in their home. Okay, again, to be, be eligible, you've got to be a resident Lubeck. And it's got to be removed from the school by the time of our meetings.
Are these?
The reason you want it removed is because their safety has been tried, look, well.
Well, one is safe, one is safety, uh, you know, it's likely an unsecure area. And, you know, during basketball games and other times, when chasing kids off the stage with like hurting caps, you get one kid off and they get three up on it, and they're climbing around. And a lot of the equipment, uh, the weight equipment especially, can be moved, there's plates on it. Uh, it gets up and down, I'm afraid someone's going to get some fingers in there and, and it gets squished. The broken stuff, they climb on that, you see the seat must not break. And some guardrails and safety rails mess on the other. Uh, so I, I'd like to at least eliminate that, uh, at first. And maybe we'll work through it as we go through the year, and we find some place or somewhere to secure the equipment, so.
Is, is the weightlifting equipment used at all?
No, not at all. No.
Is there any?
It's a, it's a system that has plates. Uh, you put different sized plates on.
Yeah, you put a pin there and it flips up with a pulley and stuff.
Yeah, there's some of that too. Yes, it's not used.
Is it used by anyone in the town? Maybe you want to have an open gym or something like that?
Not, I don't know.
What about the fitness floor?
Well, I, it's, how, how old is this obsolete stuff you would consider?
I would say you have three good pieces of equipment. That could be worth some amount of dollars if you want to sell it, move it on. Uh, the rest is, you know, is okay and, and in quite rough shape actually.
I would get a value on that, I mean, something like that, I mean.
Well, you could compare it to, to the new, to the new things there, though, and the same. You have a lathe press there, that's, that's fairly good. Uh, I'd say new lathe press, I just bought one the other day for Kent, uh, years ago. Uh, I paid about three grand for it. I would say yours is probably worth five hundred to six hundred, somewhere in there, so. The next thing, who wants it and who wants to come get it and?
Is there any value to the, to making a program so the kids would use it?
For elementary kids, uh, maybe some free weights. Uh, the, the exercise to put on the gym that is more for, uh, more weight, uh, larger people, older people. I have been doing some teaching, some, a little bit of weightlifting with some of our students here and there. But as far as the equipment there, it doesn't match our students we have.
Well, I would like to see maybe the damaged stuff be removed from that area. And maybe brought down to the industrial lots area to be secured and then disposed it somehow. Maybe like we did with the desks in the LCOC, put out someone in the town? Want it?
We'd like to, uh, we have a release of liability, a waiver of liability agreement that stands. I didn't know. I was asking, can't help it.
Well, if, if we, if we had one, it would be included in the facilities policy. That's still a consideration by this board. Um.
Well, I'm talking about something that would specifically waive any right for them to come back at us if they get damaged with the equipment we gave them.
In the, uh, oh, if, if we dispose them?
Yeah.
Something, something, something could be drafted in the case of disposal.
That's fine.
I thought you meant.
Yeah, no, I meant in the case of disposal.
In, in the case of disposal, the understanding could be as is where is similar to when we put a bus stop.
And they assume all the risks.
Yeah.
So that's something the board would like to see. I, I'd like to see it removed and get it off the stage. At least the broken pieces, until we can make a determination what the other stuff is, is any kind of value.
I think it'd be great for that.
So.
I'm going to do that.
Remove, remove, remove broken equipment.
So, uh, basically to remove the broken equipment from the stage, put it in a sort of industrial lots area, maybe down in that garage area. And then, um.
It makes sense to move right into the second step, though, and not just leave it there and forget about it.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, you know, put it in the paper, like we did with the desk at the LCOC. You know, that, uh, on a certain day, they could come down there, and we have to determine what that day would be. They would be down there to give them a tour.
It's around the website.
Yep.
And on Facebook.
So. So maybe if we can draft something like that and put it on the website. Um, so whatever the, whatever the equipment is, it's as is where is. We don't know if it functions. To be eligible to receive it, you'd have to be a resident Lubeck. Just like we did with the desk, you have to prove your residency here, okay, and remove it from the site.
How does that?
That make sense? So.
Is, is there a second?
Is there a second on that motion?
No, second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Colin, favorit?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we get that other stuff up and find out what the other stuff might be worth or whatever, and?
I'll chase that down.
Okay, thank you. Okay, consider the first reading of policy E B C E, school closings and cancellations. One big document we have in front of you. So right now, the school note of the messenger system works fairly efficiently. Okay? Although I think one of the days went out at six o'clock in the morning, six oh five, five thirty.
That, that was a, one was, one of them was a late notification. Right away, the delay was earlier.
Right.
But Monday was a late notification.
Right.
And that is because we're watching the weather and trying to make an educated guess.
Yeah, it went out and it started raining and all the snow disappeared.
And, and I, I, I heard about that last night in Eastport, too. Uh, oh, you know, looking at the weather report, they called for the temperature to drop. When I called Tina, it was thirty-four degrees, and the forecast was for it to get colder. So the risk is, if we did an early release, kids are going to be coming out on ice covered roads. Uh, even if we went the full day, the forecast was for it to draw. In the end, the temperature didn't drop, it stayed above freezing, and as Mike suggested, it, it was a rainy day with a windfall. Uh, but it's, uh, obviously if it, if, the decision had to be made, and I'm going to err on the side of caution. Uh, so, you know, we do the best we can. But if you're curious, Tina's my first call, because Lubeck starts earliest. Uh, you have kids in the building at seven-thirty, the buses go before that, so she's my first call. Call number two is Alexander, because they're probably thirty miles inland and see a significant.
They could be getting a foot of snow where we're getting sunshine here.
That's correct. So those, those are my first two calls in the morning. And, uh, it's, it's compared notes. If you're curious, on that Monday, every district in the county except one canceled. Mayor Gwiggus was in session, but Chinas, Woodman, Callis, uh, as well as ourselves, all canceled. Uh, so while there was one, there's only one in the, in the county. Callis ended up canceling all day on Tuesday, uh, when the rest of us went with the delay. But, uh.
Okay, so how fast does this get on the website? Because even that day, I noticed, you know, people, whether they didn't get the messenger or the whatever, but, you know, they were all on Facebook, you know, wondering what's going on and something like that. How fast is this information on the website now that we have one?
You know, my, my understanding would be, I mean, those who administer the website would get the notification from school messenger. Uh, so it's a secondary function.
It was, it was really fast. I looked on there and, um, it was almost instantaneously, as soon as it was posted on Facebook or anything, and they were on it. They did a good job posting it, immediate.
I can tell you that Kat's name is usually on the bottom of the snowbook. And because of the feedback, also website, I now immediately, the minute I get the call, I call Kat. Kat is my first call, because she's on the list, so that she can get that up.
It was immediately on there. It was excellent.
But our, our bus drivers are actually on the road at five-twenty, come to the school. We have bus drivers on, and so we can make that call at five-twenty.
Isn't that the one nice and shiny?
It is.
How can you get it on that yet?
It's been driven today, so we have a broken down bus.
Glass is half-full, Anna.
Yes.
The new bus is nice and shiny.
Yes, it is, but we are, but we're realistic too, Kenny, that we have, we, we have driver medical issues behind ourselves.
Yep.
And not, um, but you follow.
The, the only question I have about this format where we go down to optional. So, am I reading this right? If approved by the school committee, the superintendent may submit a plan to the commissioner over a five, one-hour extension to the school day?
Yep.
Okay.
This, this board does not have to go along with the extended, extended hour in the afternoon. We've done that in the past in some places, some places don't. Uh, but that is an option. Now, there are several options available to school districts to make up snow days. You can go on Saturday, you can tack them on at the end, you can do the extend the day by an hour. And there are calculations that go along with that as to how many extended days equal one and so on. But in order to use that option, I do have to send a letter to the commissioner.
Right. Uh, well, I'd, I'd like to see that basically off this reading here. My viewpoint is that, you know, we've had some mixed review on how that worked last year. Some people liked it, and a lot of people didn't like it. And it was a little bit hotter on the children night. Because giving them that extra hour during the day and something like that, maybe they'll drag it on one more hour, so. And if we can actually probably look at tackling that, if we really need to, I mean, we might have, you know, we might not use any more snow days for the rest of the year. Wish for nothing, but.
That is something that came up last year, and something that I thought, um, and I, these other people agreed with me. It should be a survey question that goes out to parents. And to the, to the staff and parents and see what, what does the majority want? I would like to know their opinion. How does it affect them? So when, I notice this will come up until, I don't know, a couple of months?
You're right, you're right, you have to use the built-in date. Like, we have five built-in on our calendar, and after you use five, then this becomes an option. And what has happened in the past is that, uh, we brought it to the board and we voted, what do you, what do, what do we want to do? We voted last time.
We haven't had the letter in to this in time.
How soon? Um, there really isn't any, there really isn't any, any deadline. I, I'll, I'll tell you the truth, there have been a couple of places where we've started the process before the commissioner's approved it, just because it gets to be April, May, and, you know, so. But I, I can't imagine it being denied.
I'd like to know what the parents think about that before we eliminate it.
Yes.
And the same thing, I'd like to know what the teachers think.
Each, both.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to know the teachers. Everybody that it affects, all the adults that it affects, um, as far as, you know, the, the, the parents, um, and the teachers and anybody that is going to be affected by this. Um, I would like to know, I don't feel comfortable just making that decision for them, because they, if they might want to extend it out a day or two in the school year, and one extra hour might throw their whole schedule off, their work schedule, their daycare schedule, everything for so many days. I, I would like to go with the majority.
The, the policy gives the board the option. You can, you can both direct me to do that or not. Uh, so the, the policy just gives the option. If you adopted the policy but didn't want to have that as a practice, you wouldn't be in violation of anything. You would just be telling me in March or April, we're not going to do the extended date. We'll, we'll do something else, so.
I, I would certainly like to hear what the teachers have to say, but it, it seems like there's also a huge financial difference between having another whole day at school and extending the school day, the, the school day by an hour.
Yeah, because if, if you, if you, I'll, I'll use the traditional method of tagging them on at the end. If you tack them on at the end, the buses are going to run the extra day, uh, as opposed to an hour and a half extension or a two-hour extension, your buses aren't going to make, aren't, aren't going to make a separate trip. Uh, it's, it's, it's just pick them up in the morning and take them home in the afternoon, they're just taking them home later. But you are, you're correct, Melissa, if we tack it on at the end of the day, it's another day, your buses would run. Um, I can't put a doll figure on that additional expense, but that is, that is a calculation. I, I, I can't tell you what it is, but that would be a consideration.
Okay, so this is, I think, the first reading anyways, so.
Yep.
There was a motion on the first reading.
I'm on it.
Second on that?
Uh, well, actually. I have a question, but I have to wait until after the second.
You need a second before I can get a question?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, our question.
A question, are we keeping this optional in for now? You, you suggested taking it out.
The, the, the first reading simply means the board is going to take their, take the policy, spend some time with it, thinking. policy, spend some time with it, think about it and, you know, you can get some feedback, I'm sure, especially from the teachers, that wouldn't, wouldn't take, wouldn't take too much difficulty. Uh, but if you're not adopting the policy here this evening, what will happen is I'll bring it back with me at our next meeting and you can adopt it or take some other action.
All in favor? Number three, to consider a stipend in job description for IT coordinator. Yeah, I believe you have something in front of you. Could you put together something on that?
Yeah, I did, we got a month ago.
Okay. Uh, that's one where, like a master's degree and something like that.
Yeah.
That was a, that was a little excessive, but you're a good person, but, um, so this here has been put together and it's basically, um, very simple, you know, we don't, not looking for a master's degree or any kind of a, you know, computer program and so on like that, so. But, uh, if you're going to look this over and so on like that, it's very simple of what it is. It's an in-house position, it is a stipend position, so you don't have to be, you know, a super-sulphing computers and so on like that. But it's basically, you know, the responsibilities of, you know, someone who knows their way in and out of some of the, um, computer systems that we have. And if they can't rectify the situation, then they move it up one notch to someone else who can. And, um, so.
Mike, did you see this?
Yeah.
What she, what you do?
Yes, I did. And-
Between both of us, I could take another crack after you're done.
Well, any discussion on what we have in front of us here as far as we want to consolidate this and, I, I really can't see this going on a vote tonight because we've just looked at this and then looked at what we have, um, to put out there.
I don't, I don't know that we can put specifics down. Kathy's there, is it like how many hours and all that?
Well, she did do that, but I wouldn't do that in a job description.
Yeah.
I just use this as-
You just, you just don't know. It's just you're there, do what you can, it's a stipend position, it's not like you have to do a time clock really.
Right.
It's just you're on there. You put out the fires, you make the call. Because I remember that there was one discussion where Ms. Formal was saying that she doesn't have enough time to do the calls and everything, that this IT person is assess the situation, makes the call, that's their job, it's a stipend. It's not heavy duty work, it's, it's over their head, they just make the call. And we- I think it's particularly valuable though for Kathy in this first year to keep track of her hours and what she's doing so that we know what, what the job is.
Oh, yeah. And her use.
I think, yeah. Well, and it also helps to keep a record of where the repeat problems are, where the repeat, um, computer problems are. That if you need to replace it, you look and say this has been fixed ten times over, it's time to replace it. Nothing, nothing elaborate though, I think it can be very simple.
So, in the budget, do we have the amount of stipend?
There is an amount of money on the line that does not, however, necessarily have to be the stipend.
Okay. Do we have the current stipend that's been approved?
I don't believe so. There, like I said, and, and, and I don't, it, it seems like, it seems like I'm being facetious here. This, this board, when they, when they develop this current budget, there is money on the line that could be expended. However, the stipend, uh, to my knowledge, and if I'm being correct, somebody please refresh my memory, I don't believe the stipend is beneficially decided upon. Conceivably, the stipend could be less than what's on the line. Or if the job description is, um, is, uh, is detailed and significant and you expect more services from the position, conceivably you could say that the stipend's going to be a little bit more than what is on an, an individual line. So the stipend hasn't been decided, but there is money on a line.
Well, I, I thought when that was created last year, that there was, uh, the, I don't know that it was voted on, but it was really heavily discussed and everybody was grieving, I think, that the person that's in charge of the website, and I believe that Margaret Casey was, um, mentioned in that was supposed to get a thousand dollar webs, uh, stipend. And that wasn't, that wasn't separate from the IT stipend, but in the budget, it went together as thirty-five hundred. And what I understood was the IT person, the contact person with the knowledge of the IT stuff, was supposed to get twenty-five hundred and a thousand dollars was supposed to be for the person that just updates the website, that doesn't do the, putting out the fires or anything. That person would be paid a little bit more in a stipend. I don't know, is that-
That, it was a conversation on that.
The thirty-five hun, the thirty-five hundred dollar figure that, that Stephanie is quoting isn't indeed my understanding of what's on the line. I'm going from memory, she, you know, between the two of us, I, I, I think that's a safe, I think that's a safe bet that that's indeed what's on the line.
It's supposed to be for two people though. I mean, one person, unless one person wanted to do both jobs, but my understanding is that two people are going to be involved in the different aspects.
If, if, if that breakout, as Stephanie has described it, is what the board wants, it's, the line can accommodate it.
Well, I would, I'm seeing faces over there. I want to know what's happening at the school before we make any-
Who's making faces?
I would like to hear from someone who works at the school, what is actually happening in terms of updating the website, in terms of, um, all the work, the IT work is being done right now. So I'm wondering if Anna might-
And my look is not a look, so I don't want to be confused. My look is just confusion because I think that needs to be held between Ms. Casey and Ms., um, Morris, Ms. Formal and the board because I, I'm not sure, I think it's a control, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to, because I'm, the look is not making faces, the look is-
Yeah.
I'm trying to draw back of what I believe, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, I believe that Kathy and Ms. Casey are working together in the, um, website update. Um, I know Kathy's taking an active role, I know, so it, I, um, potentially I'm not sure it's going to be two separate people, but I'm not making, I'm just, I'm, I'm confused too. It's not clear.
If I can, if I can make a suggestion, if proven budgeting, you put money on the line.
I didn't mean any of that.
So, the, the, what I would say is this, if it pleases the board, um, I can interface with Anna and Margaret and Kathy and have a mini negotiation to determine who's doing what and what would be, what they would accept as a potential stipend and I can bring it back to the board. Is that-
Is that a union issue though? Shouldn't it just be the principal and the two people? Or is this a union issue?
It could be a union issue simply because salary, wages, wages, benefits and working conditions are mandatory subjects of our, how they do.
I don't know.
So this would fall under compensation. We're in the process of drafting a job description, um, if it pleases the board, I can meet with those folks and we can have kind of a mini negotiation and I can bring information back.
But, um, I mean, they might not be here forever. It should be two separate positions and then I, I think, you know, there's an IT, there's a person that updates the website and there's an IT, um, stipend coordinator helper position. Those are two separate, but if one of them leaves and they have this little combined thing, I, I'll take this much, I'll take this much. Shouldn't it be defined right from the get-go? Not on the person, I mean, it's, they want to do something for themselves, that's fine. But, or they want to, you know, make something formal, but officially shouldn't it be two separate things with two separate monies so that if one of them leaves, another person can come into that position?
Right. I mean, it, it, it can be and truthfully, management as a board would have the ability to, um, amend the job description with in, with input. You know, there, there's room here to negotiate, literally negotiate, like get expectations out of that position. Uh, but you are correct, it could just as easily be two positions for the reason that you mentioned. If somebody leaves, uh, and one person stays, then it would seem wise to have it broken up into two positions.
I'm just thinking about in the future, you know, if one does leave and, so then, you don't have to sit there and redo the job description every time a new person comes in. It's this, and then if one person can fill both, fine, great, it's two positions, but they fill both, both requirements.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, we table this number three until we get more description of what's going on. Um, and maybe, um, you have a copy of that job description that you put up?
I don't, no, I don't even have that, but I can rework what the information I have in hand.
And if you could get a copy of that and then put that, is this exactly what's going on? Is this exact, exactly what they're doing and so on like that, what their expectations are and so on like that?
Yeah. I have a question. Would they be interested in coming and telling the board what they want? I mean, what would be proven for what they're, what they're doing? Would they, I don't want them to be uncomfortable, would they want to?
We can, I can ask. I think, I think that's reasonable.
I mean, if they don't want you, I certainly don't want to make them, but, um, if they would like to have their say, I would certainly give them their time.
I can ask.
Okay.
Okay, so we have that table until we get more information. That's all there is, folks. Seven oh three. Have a Merry Christmas.